Okay. Moving on now to item 23, investigator's report, please.
Chairman of the Board of Education, I believe that you all received the report from Chris Campbell, who was retained pursuant to the motion at the last board meeting to complete the investigation pursuant to your direction. You received the report yesterday afternoon.
Has everybody had a chance to review the report? Okay. If everybody's had a chance to review the report, I then would need a motion for the Board to accept this report.
I would make the motion to accept this report.
I have a motion to accept. Mr. Guzman, second. All in favor of accepting the report as is?
Aye.
All opposed? What, Ms. Higginson? Okay. Is there any further discussion as it relates to this report?
Well, I mean, I guess, are we gonna... When you say discussion, we have time here to review it? I mean, what exactly are we gonna do with the information?
Well, you all have several options that you can do with. You can, after reviewing, you can decide that you wish to do nothing. You can decide that there were certain issues that arose in the report that you think need additional investigation. You can act on the report. You can refer the court to other agencies, law enforcement, State Board of Education, et cetera, but that's all within your purview at this point.
No.
All right. One at a time. My recognition.
What does law enforcement or the State Board of Education have to do with any of this?
That is a right that the Board has under any motions or discussions you're in censure.
I understand that, but my colleagues on the State Board are looking at this and laughing. And we all know that all LEAs basically govern themselves.
I'm not making any...
I know, I understand.
......
Mr. Chairman, as I read through the report and looked it over, I kept looking for something illegal. I kept looking for something that... I mean, I found things that folks may say, hey, I didn't mean to do that, this or that. But I didn't find anything... And I really looked and I searched. I just find anything illegal. If we want to say that lateness to some meetings and things of that nature, hey, that's bad. We can say that, but I've not found anything where... I mean, when this first broke at last month's meeting, I mean, I really looked far and near to find something other than where communication would have solved the problem. And the report bared that out. The report bared out that, you know, no one at any time, the Assistant Principal in question felt, you know, overwhelmed or under any pressure. I didn't find anything that rose to illegality. And I looked. So if someone else saw something different, I'll be... I'm open to hear that, but I did not find anything.
Okay.
I would like to speak to the first part of this report. I question the term illegality. I think it's merely an ethical consideration. But as I looked through many of these pages several times, the thing that stood out most in my mind was a statement by the Assistant Principal himself. And that statement was, at no time did he recall Ms. Savage asking him to remove Mr. Martin from campus, and they had no further conversation. That stands out to me, having been through another situation with an employee and a board member. I can recall a different answer from that employee that rose to the level of a censure. I'm not sure, in my mind, at this point, by that statement from the employee, that this rises, in my mind, to the level of a censure. I think that possibly Ms. Savage used some poor judgment, quoted policy erroneously, and Mr. Martin's right to be on the property erroneously. I wish she would have looked at that a little closer before she said anything. But God knows, I've never said anything out of place either. I find that Mr. Thompson's statement is the one that speaks to me the most. He did not give an indication of feeling threatened by the statement.
And I stand by the term legality, because that's really what I was looking for. I wasn't looking for some... You know, I was looking for something wrong, and I didn't find that. And so I agree with you. I agree with you. I think we're coming to the same conclusion.
I think ethics is an illegal question. I think ethics is what we have to hold ourselves to.
But I didn't see anything that was unethical either. And that's why I used the term legality, because I think you're right. I think this thing hinged on... And I looked on the Assistant Principal, what he had to say, and it was, she made a comment, he took it to the principal, you know, they made a determination predicated on what they knew, and nothing more was... Had to do with, you know, with Ms. Savage.
Well, you know, I think I had said last month, I mean, obviously, this is a very unfortunate situation that we really got into, I would consider a he-said, she-said. And, you know, none of us were there. So, you know, I don't really know exactly if there's anything more than... That went on with that particular situation than is in here. Obviously, Ms. Savage is free to weigh in and say whatever she wants to add. I mean, it looked like, to me, some of the questions really weren't answered. And, you know, I mean, I don't know if there's anything that you want to add to this point. I do have questions. In looking over this, some of this didn't really make sense to me, I guess. And when I say makes sense, obviously, I understood the context of it all, but I guess I wanted some clarification, because I have... And I have given back my computer, so I have printed out the stuff. I don't... I have something about, and I'm sure you all do too, the Board of Education travel information, NC State Board travel information. I'm not sure how that ties in with what we're talking about, the goings-on at Marvin Ridge. And I know that there were two issues. There was the issue that Marvin...
I'm sorry. That's why I said I was taking it as separate issues. I think the Marvin Ridge issue...
Yeah, I mean, and that's when I guess we're talking about discussion. I mean, are we gonna talk about the Marvin issue? And then I believe that it was also an issue of... Well, no, I mean, I don't believe... I know that it's also an issue about attendance or...
Right. Well, let's do this. So there were... Do you have the original... Oh, the motion that was made, you know, what we were investigating?
What you all asked that be investigated was the conversation at Marvin Ridge High School that led to the removal of the other candidate from the premises. And then there was an allegation regarding the canceling of a curriculum committee meeting based upon Ms. Savage's inavailability due to her attendance at State Board of Education events.
So let's take the first piece. Is there any other discussion, or would the Board like to move forward as it relates to the Marvin Ridge issue?
In that, in the incident, Marvin Ridge, as I read through the investigation on that topic, I guess I was looking for is what was the overall intent? What was the motivation to bring it to the Assistant Principal? And I don't know that it was uncovered what the real intent was. But in reading the interview from the Assistant Principal, he stated that he did not believe that Ms. Savage was asking him to do anything in the role of a board member. So I think, again, if that was the intent, or whether or not it was a mistake in policy, or if it was a thought of a law that was state law, local law, I don't know. I think it was, for me, if it was, it looked like a infraction of the law, then I'd probably call the authorities. I probably wouldn't take it to the principal. If I thought it was a policy issue, maybe I would take that to the Assistant Principal, make them aware of that. Again, I don't know. And it wasn't clear from here, so I don't know that I could, again, make a decision on censure based on the information that was presented here.
Okay. Is there any other question? Any other statements or comments as it relates to Marvin Ridge and whether that was a censurable item?
Mr. Chair, I think that the facts of the investigation do reveal ethical questions as far as the deception that was offered by Mrs. Savage in her account of what happened, both in open testimony at our last meeting, as well as the accounting of Vice Principal, what he was told. So I think that's an issue. I think that's an issue for any of us when we're not truthful. I think that the investigation also showed a rather willful and blatant evasiveness in answering these questions. Throughout the course of the investigation, both in writing and offers for oral testimony and clarification, that wasn't done. And, you know, I think that that speaks to ethical questions. And as elected officials, I think we are set to a higher standard to be truthful...
(laughter)
To be truthful, as well as responsive, when those ethics are questioned. So, you know, I think we do have an issue of ethics violation that warrants a censure in this count.
And how does one censure if we don't even have it in our policy? And as far as the questions that Mr. Campbell had sent, my response was, please clarify the question, presumes a fact, not an evidence. And I told him I was going out of town, have limited access. He never got back to me to clarify each of those said questions.
I think there's an email trail that addresses that. There was correspondence in writing, that attempts to reach you were put forth, both in writing, as well as offering to speak with you via telephone, but you did not respond.
And we did speak via telephone, and then he told me what my options were, and I exercised my rights here. And I answered them. I answered the questions that he originally sent to me.
Okay. So questions were asked, questions were answered. My issue is that, and over the last two years, I've been acutely aware of when I walk into a school, there are times I try to put my badge in my pocket, and I try to be Tori's dad or Ellie's dad. And if I'm working with folks who've never met me before, or who haven't seen the stationery, I get away with it for a little while. So as much as I appreciate the principal, Assistant Principal stating that he did not believe you were acting as a board member, you are a board member. You were a board member. And there is at no point in time that a board member can walk into any facility that is related to Union County Public Schools and just be a parent. I have become acutely aware of that over the last two years. And that is something that... Well, you've shared that with me, that whenever you walk in, you're always going to be the board member. So whether it was a frustrated day, and you just flew off the handle, whether it was something that there was specific intent, I don't know. But you were always a board member when you walk into a school. So even if you're working with a PTO, as a PTO representative, or whether you're working with the site-based team, when you pull your badge out and you go through the door, it says "board member." And that is always going to be there. And there is an implied authority that comes with that for any of the people that we represent. Any of those people in those buildings know that you're on the Board of Education, and they know that whatever you say, whatever you do, may circle back to the General Counsel or may circle back to the Chairman of the Board, or may circle back to the Superintendent, but they are going to snap to at that time.
Mr. Chair, can we... Can I interrupt for just one second? Can I ask Dr. Ellis to leave this table and sit in the audience, please? I don't think her presence is necessary. I'm sorry.
Thank you. That's okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So whether what happened at Marvin Ridge was censurable or not, I will entertain the pleasure of the Board at that point. But I know in conversations with you from, you know, the first couple of months, that I was always a board member walking in the door, and that there'd never be a time that I would be unrecognizable as just a parent anymore. And I took that to heart.
No, go ahead.
I have a question. On question 21, it said, prior to August 19th, have you ever handed out campaign literature for your own election or reelection at school, for the school board? It said for football games, school buildings, et cetera. You've never campaigned?
I've been at Marvin Ridge since its inception.
Right. But at football games, you never campaigned?
No. Sherry and I ran together four years ago, and we never had the need to do that.
Well, I did campaign at football games. I did. And, you know, I'm just gonna say that it really pains me that my last board meeting, after a four-year commitment to this board, is ending with discussion on this. And I will also say, though, that if I was walking into a school building during an election season, and I saw Christina passing out information in the parking lot or at the front door, I would probably say... I may not even acknowledge her, or I may say, hi, how are you? And then I would continue on about my business. I don't know whether this was a misunderstanding. I cannot begin to presume any... Your intent, whatever. I wished that the way that this had gone down last month was that you would have said, if there was a misunderstanding, I'm sorry about it. That was not my intention. And then we would have stopped wasting time and money for, basically, what I still don't really understand as far as... Like, again, I mean, I can comprehend this, but I don't think there is very clear resolution. So, you know, I just... I'm saddened that that did not happen and that it went down like this.
And I agree. And, you know, after a couple of weeks, or two weeks, whatever, after this happened, ran into the Assistant Principal, and I even told him, apologized for all the confusion. And he said, you know what? Not a problem. Don't even worry about it, and moved on. So it was done. It was stated here. It had been handled.
Well, and I go back to the points of 2021, where staff was involved. I mean, there again, we have misrepresentation by part of the Vice Chair and what was said, what was done by staff. I think that the evasiveness and the deception is a key issue here on this particular count. And like I say, I would have loved for this to have been voted on at our last meeting. I would have loved to have this put to bed, but it was a pleasure of this board to be investigated. There were those of us that were ready to vote that night. And like I say, my concerns were, number one, what action took place, and basically the scenario has been proved out by the investigation, the deception that occurred concerning those facts, and still a pretty blatant reluctance to accept that. Marcy Savage has had the keys to this all the way through. She could have said, yes, I made a mistake. I'm sorry. She could have cleared the air. But no, it was perpetuated through deception, and we still don't have clear answers.
I already did with the person that... With the Assistant Principal.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Marcy. But we do not have clear answers. You've been evasive in the process.
Being evasive in '20 and '21? Question 20, if yes to question... Okay. Or question 19, did you talk to any newspapers? Yes. This is question 20. If yes to question 19, who did you speak with and what was the substance of the conversation? Carolyn Steeves from the Inquirer Journal called to ask me what transpired that morning at the high school, our related events, as I understood them. How was that evasive? 21, prior to August 19th, have you ever handed out campaign literature for your own election or reelection to the school board? A, outside of a football game or other school-sponsored event, sporting event? No. B, outside a school building or after-school hours? No. C, inside a school building or after-school hours? No. Outside a school building during school hours? Or no. E, inside a school building during school hours? No. Where is the evasiveness? Better concrete facts.
The deception occurred in item 21, when you represented what you were told by staff when you inquired of Dr. Webb. But yet we have transcripts of the interview with Dr. Webb that directly contradict what you represented to be the truth.
I asked Dr. Webb, what is the policy concerning this? Is there about... Not as far as... As far as somebody standing out there. He said, I'll get back to you with this. And he was the one that had called me to follow up with an email that had not been answered. I have my Verizon phone records. I looked at them.
Yes, and we have the transcripts and testimony from the witnesses contradict what you said.
Yeah. Well, I have a question.
Mr. Benson.
You know, Mr. Stewart, what would she be guilty of? And what would she be guilty of that we could make a judgment on? Because I read the same report, and I'm not coming to the conclusions you are, because this centered around her going to the Assistant Principal. That, the report clearly defines that the Assistant Principal... And I heard what the Chairman said, and I don't agree with his philosophy on that, because, you know, people, administrators at high schools... And I've been thinking about this. Administrators at high schools deal with people around the world. Now, all of a sudden, a board member walks in, and somehow they become jealous. I don't see that. So what would she be guilty of? What would be... She is guilty of... Because the report says that she apologized at the football game, and when they got the Wachovia Cup, what would she be guilty of? If she's guilty of, what would it be? Because I'm not, you know, I'm not seeing it. And I really... I'm trying to see what you're seeing, but I read the same report, and I don't see that. So what would she be guilty... What could we frame it as a motion that Marcy Savage needs to be censored because what?
For deception.
Okay. Where was there this... Ladies and gentlemen, this is serious business. Allow us to do this business, please. What is the deception?
The deception and representation of what occurred, what was told to the Assistant Principal, what transpired in the conversation with Dr. Webb in the course of these transcripts. The examples are there. We've all read it. And there's a variance in what the witnesses allowed with the account, but yet there's no deception in your eyes?
Okay. Take, for example, the Assistant Principal. Could we not... Do we not believe that he accepted her apology when he apologized?
That's not the issue, Mr. Benson.
Okay. What is the issue?
The issue is a direct answer in an open meeting that I've told... She basically went in and said, somebody's campaigning out there. You need to address it. But actually, she went in and told them somebody's campaigning out there, and that was against the law. And when the Vice Chair of the Board of Education comes in and tells a green Assistant Principal, somebody's in front of the school breaking the law. Whether you do that under the color of your ID card that says, I'm a board member, or the implication of color of force, that is a violation of ethics, both in line communications between the school board and administration. We deal with the Superintendent. Our policy is crystal clear.
Okay. Now, if in fact...
Mr. Benson, wait. Let Mr. Stewart finish.
First of all, he's not...
Wait, let him finish. It is a clear violation of line of communication with staff. We, as board members, don't do that. I get out in the schools a lot to deal with construction contracts and observe things. You ask anybody on the staff, the principal, you ask the Deputy Superintendent, you ask the Superintendent, if I have an issue, I notify the Superintendent and the appropriate Deputy Superintendent. I do not interact with the principal, a Vice Principal, or a teacher, or anybody else conducting business that may reflect on the Board of Education. That's the long and the short of it. It's a clear violation of policy. And also, like I say, if you read this report, you read the testimony, there's a pattern of evasiveness and deception throughout what has been offered. And that's the public trust. That's the public trust. And there's other issues that we'll speak to shortly that also involve the public trust. And if we're willing to, to Smith-Sett, I maintain to you that that is what is wrong with government in this country, in this state, and even in this county right now, is the lack of accountability when it comes to the public trust and the people that need to stand up for it.
All right. When she said it was against the law, and somewhere along the line, she realized that she had a question about what she said, and calling Dr. Webb, and finding out the policy, and then apologizing to the Assistant Principal, would that not put that issue to bed?
Why did the Vice Chair not simply admit her mistake at the meeting the other night and apologize to the system, the administrator, and to this board for her actions? Why did she not accept responsibility and practice accountability, Mr. Benson?
Are you sorry for what you did?
I apologized to the Assistant Principal.
No, no. Are you sorry?
I apologized for... And I even said that. I said, I apologize for simple mistake. However, I am not stupid. I understand, and I realize, we do not create law. We are not the General Assembly. We enforce policy. I did not say, and I've said it repeatedly, I did not say... I'm not stupid enough to say that's against the law, knowing we do not create the law in North Carolina.
So are you saying the Assistant Principal has been deceptive in his testimony?
I'm not saying that he's being deceptive. I'm saying, I know what I said, and I said, there's somebody out there campaigning because parents were upset. Here they were, going to pick up their child, their freshman son, daughter, whatever, their schedule, and that was their issue at hand. Redistricting was still fresh on their minds, and they really did not appreciate the fact that somebody was out there campaigning that morning when they're more concerned about a bus schedule, a locker rental.
Let me just bring it home, then. If you're implying that the Assistant Principal has lied in his testimony provided to investigators...
I am not implying that.
I did not interrupt you.
I know what I said.
You know what you said, and we know what the Assistant Principal allowed. I can tell you, if we have an employee that's being deceptive, it needs to be dealt with. And by that same standard, if we have a member sitting on this board that has been deceptive, it needs to be dealt with.
Okay. Can I speak, Mr. Chair?
Go right ahead.
I'm looking at number eight in the report. According to Mr. Thompson, Ms. Savage said, we have a candidate actively campaigning, and that's against the law. Or someone is campaigning outside. That's against the law. Mr. Thompson was asked several times about Ms. Savage's statements on multiple occasions and has consistently responded with the same statement. and has consistently responded with the same statement. Ms. Savage declined to provide an account of her conversation with Mr. Thompson to the investigator.
Because it was one of those questions, like I said before.
Can I jump in with the rest of the-
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
...anybody? I want to-
Now, how can that be?
I just feel compelled to point out that I don't want this board to interpret any failure to answer a question as evasiveness. Ms. Savage was clearly told in the email from Mr. Campbell that she didn't have to answer any questions. So, whereas-
I saw that, I did read that. I did read that in the statement.
Thank you, because, and that's why I always said, you know, for the certain questions, please clarify the questions presumed a fact, not an evidence. And that was, and that response was based on attorney recommendation.
My thought process, Marcy, at this point is fairly simple. I just, I'm trying to decide why you declined to provide an account of the conversation, even though you were told you could, but yet you don't have any, there's nothing stopping you from providing your account just now that you did not state that it was against the law?
And it's, we've, we've already been over this last month, we're, you know, here, we're beating this dead horse yet again. I apologized to Mr. Thompson, saying, you know, I, I'm sorry for the mass confusion, I'm sorry I put you in that situation. He said, don't worry, it's not a problem, you know, onward and upward, whatever, what have you, and moved on.
Let's, uh-
You know, the other issue was that I canceled the curriculum meeting. I did not cancel the curriculum meeting. I simply emailed 24 hours in advance, said, I could not make it. So that was the issue, you said that I'd canceled the curriculum meeting, and that was not my call to make. But you sat as a chair, and there's only two other members on that committee, and without a third. There was still a majority to, to run the meeting.
So, let's move on to the curriculum meeting since we're there.
Well, can I?
Go ahead.
Are there any questions now, Ms. Savage, that you would like to answer that Mr. Campbell has asked? He never got back to me with the, with the clarified questions, so, I mean, we are where we are.
So through the course of the investigation, in looking at traveling and, and the curriculum committee, we came up with some other, some, some anomalies, and as it relates to some expense reports. On October 20th, 2014, Ms. Savage signed and submitted a travel information summary to the State Board for travel from Waxaw to Belmont for NCSBA District 6. On September 18th, 2014, for 85 miles, the State Board documents, it does not appear this, this amount was officially submitted for reimbursement, see paragraph 14 below. Go to paragraph 14, on October 24th, Ms. Savage signed and submitted a State Board of Education expense reimbursement entitled NC Department of Public Instruction Reimbursement for Travel and Other Expenses Incurred in the Discharge of Her Official Duties for the Dates 9/5/14 through 10/15/14, and the request included reimbursement for travel from Waxaw to Belmont for District 6 meeting on September 18th, 2014, for 64 miles. On October 22nd, Ms. Savage submitted an official expense reimbursement request to Union County for travel from Waxaw to Belmont for the District 6 meeting on September 18th for 63.5 miles. Travel reimbursement documents from the State Board were received on November the 4th as part of a public information request. Ms. Savage has declined to provide further information to the undersigned regarding her whereabouts on September 17th, including the meaning of the phrase, I'll be in the western side of the state tomorrow, and will be, will not be able to make it back to present in Belmont tomorrow night. She also declined to provide information regarding any additional activities on behalf of the State Board of Education during the week of September 15. My problem with that is this. If, if you work for a private company and you pad your expense report, it's something you can get chastised for and terminated. If a teacher purposefully padded their expense report, we'd fire them. If a principal purposefully padded their expense report, we'd fire them. If the superintendent herself padded her expense report, this board would fire her. I have a problem with that. All right? So, you know, this, this is somewhat ancillary to, to what we were investigating, but it came out in the investigation, and it's extremely disheartening and extremely disappointing. And I know that, that it's not the first time we've addressed an expense report issue with you.
Whoa, 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 excuse me. This is the first time I've seen-
This. The chair was brought into a situation, was presented to me by the superintendent, and then was reported to the general counsel.
I think you need to stick with your report.
Okay, thank you. I'll stick with the report. So right now, I've got, I've got an incidence where we, we have money that was asked of the State Board, and we have money that was asked of Union County Public School for the same event. So where we may have some questions or discrepancies as it relates to the Marvin Ridge, and he said, she said, this is pretty cut and dry. So there is nothing that I'm aware of in the state statute that says you can fire a sitting board member, but if, if this board member worked for me in a private sector, they would be terminated.
Mr. Chairman, I think, again, we have a prime instance of deceptive behavior. I mean, if you were traveling on state board business reimbursed by the state of North Carolina, then why are you asking the taxpayers of Union County to pay you for that trip as well?
Because I was only supposed to speak for one portion, the other portion where there's supposed to be two break, there's supposed to be two breakout sessions in that meeting, I was going to attend to earn hours. And, you know, that's, I'm sorry, that, you know, I guess that was an honest mistake. I didn't realize that I could not, you know, since I was going to receive credit hours, and, um, I-
I'm sorry too, Ms. Savage, because we terminate employees for stealing from our company when we catch them. Double billing is a blatant example of the abuse, once again, of the public trust. You were compensated for this trip by the State Board of Education. You then turned around and double-billed the taxpayers with a travel reimbursement submitted to the taxpayers of Union County. And, and by the comments that I heard the chair allude to earlier, I think we might have a serious problem as far as your travel reimbursements are concerned now. And this rises to the level, not only of ethical questions, but very possible, possibly legal questions as well. You know, I mean, the public trust suffers with the government now, and this is the sort of thing that doesn't help. So I think that, there again, I think this warrants censure, and quite frankly, I think it's rising to the occasion that we need to ask either law enforcement or the district attorney to look into your practices as far as the double billing of the taxpayers for travel expenses.
That's not double billing, considering that I'm 1099, I pay taxes on my state board mileage.
You were reimbursed by the state of North Carolina-
At 25 cents a mile.
And you turned around and billed the taxpayers of Union County. That alone is a disgrace, and in my opinion, if it's not against the law, it very well should be, and I think somebody needs to take a look at it.
Mr. Pig, we haven't heard from you, Seagull.
I agree with Ms. Hodges, I'm, I'm saddened at my last night here. Comes to this. I agree, I would have, as the first part, I would have felt much more comfortable if Ms. Savage would have just simply said, I made a mistake. I, I thought it was against policy, and I made a mistake. But, we all make mistakes, yeah. But again, I agree, I don't know that that's a sensible offense. I mean, people make mistakes all the time, I know I make my share. In light of the double billing, that is serious. That is serious. I'm not sure there's any way that, or not that I have heard, that explains away how you can double-bill somebody. Dear friend of mine in the past lost his job for the very same thing. Great guy, ran a good program, but because he was turning in double expense vouchers, he was gone. Again, like you said, obviously, it's not in our prerogative to fire anybody, naturally, I mean, not on the board. But I, like I said, I can't, this is, without a better explanation, this is a sensible offense.
Well, and I think that that's why I asked, I was, I was very surprised and, and needed clarification to see travel log information included in this packet, and, and not to, to be redundant and keep restating the same thing. And I'll, I'll be real honest, I mean, I'm, I'm, I wouldn't say that I'm devastated, I, I don't even know what to say about this. I wanted my children to be here tonight for my last board meeting, and when I read this and looked over this, there, there just, you know, there, there are not a, a lot of words that I can say other than it is very suspicious and it appears to be fraud. And, you know, I, I, and then for, and I know that Ms. Morris didn't want it to be expanded upon, but then to hear that it potentially has happened before, you know, and I do think that that is relevant.
Well, if you want to even look at it, you're going to need more investigation.
Well, and that's what my next question was going to be. So where then do we go from here? Because I would think that it would be relevant to look at other mileage information sheets. You know, we, we are accountable and we are responsible, and I have spent four years on this board trying to exemplify honesty, integrity, and character. To some in this county, I know, those are not very important characteristics for a person to have, but I would hope and pray, for the majority of people in this county, that is very important. So I take this very seriously, and I don't care whether theft is by 50 cents or by $5,000. I have made a decision that I don't really turn in travel logs because I feel like that is a donation that I would like to make to the school system. But if you turn in a travel log, it is solely for reimbursement, it is not for profit. And so I, I guess I think that we all need to have a serious collective discussion about this because, you know, the whole, he said, she said, didn't seem very relevant, being late or, or having other commitments, I mean, things happen as far as the board meetings. It's, it's happened, we all need to reserve the right to have to miss a meeting or, you know, be late for something. But this part of the situation, I cannot excuse at this point because we are here to teach children right from wrong, and our honesty and integrity is all we have at the end of the day. And I, you know, I just feel like if this is something that has been brought to light, I can't turn a blind's eye to it because that is not what I would stand for.
And I sincerely apologize for that, and I, you know, I, that, I can, I can reimburse for that, and, you know, that was, and, and a simple, it was an honest mistake, and I do, and I apologize for that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like, unless somebody else got other comments, I'd like to go ahead and-
I do, I do have another comment, if you don't mind.
So do I.
So I'm going to rec-
The reimbursement issue, the fact that there was no payment by Union County Public Schools for that travel, the travel voucher was pulled, realizing that it was state board business, and there was no reimbursement made. The submission was made and signed, but no reimbursement-
All right, the chair recognizes Mr. Guzman.
This is, this is the disappointing part of, of the two incidents, very disappointing. I think it goes beyond censure, and, and it may be a mistake, but it, again, I don't know if it's a pattern, maybe this has happened before. It, it opens up the door for us to have to take a look. I don't know how anyone could think that if, I don't know if you're representing the state board or the local board, that you can double dip, you can do, you can do both. No, I know and think that. And I don't know that it can be a mistake. You, you write three forms out with three different mileage totals, and you have to be thinking after a while, deja vu, haven't I done this before? It's, it's not like you checked the wrong box or you transpose a number, it's, it's not that. So I think we need to look very seriously at this, this particular incident. Again, the first one, I know that it rose to the level, I think this one rises above that level, and I don't know if that's, if what, how the board wants to move, but I think we may need to look at this a little deeper.
Reverend Bench.
I do.
Okay, Mr. Collins.
I'd be glad to defer to you, since I'll have plenty of time to talk.
I said at the last meeting, I have no problem laying the hammer where I see the hammer need to be laid, and I did not find in the first portion, as I said, but when I got to this portion, I have, I have to say I was extremely concerned, and actually came here tonight hoping to, to hear, you know, what, what, what happened, and or why. And this is, you know, I have to say, and this is what I meant earlier when I talked about finding those things with teeth, you know, this has teeth. And we just need to determine the bite ratio of the teeth. So I think, I think it probably, it will need more investigating so you make a, a whole decision and not a piece decision, you know, as we go forward.
I have a couple of questions. I think there's several things going through my mind now, some new information I'm trying to process. The travel information form that, that we have through this investigation for September, I, I've made out a lot of travel information forms in my time, none since I've been on school board. I, like Ms. Hodges, turned that back to the school system, and I don't, I don't bill back my travel at all, anywhere. But I have filled out many of these forms when I worked. I've never filled one out with the dates jumbled up as much as this one is. I usually fill them out from the first to the 30th, but these jump around a good bit on this travel form, and it's, and it's brought one thing to light that I'm concerned about, looking at the next to last entry that looks like it was added toward the end to me, and I- And I, I could be just, I'm concerned about the September 5th 14 trip billed from the state board, billed from Waxaw to Raleigh for 342 miles for the graduation rate recognition ceremony. And I've been to those before. And I'm, I'm wondering how many, if I may ask the superintendent, and I'm not sure where she is, how many staff members attended the graduation rate ceremony? Usually, when I've been before, there's been as many as eight or 10.
And can I ask how many board members went with you? Because I know in the past, we've taken anywhere from one to four or five, if they have time. Were board members seated with you at the Union County table? 9, 5, 14 is what I have.
That was, that was state, that was state board education travel. It wasn't local travel.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that I'm, I'm questioning the way it's added into this. Yep, that's what usually the graduation rate recognition is. I'm just wondering if Ms. Savage attended that the way this is added here to her travel form. It just, it just. I'm asking you whether Ms. Savage attended with the, with the Union County delegation on 9, 5, 14.
No, it's a separate incident.
And yet it says, "Purpose of the trip to attend graduation rate recognition ceremony." Is that something different, or my?
Yes, it's different. That's what I'm saying, it's state board, because I'm, it's state board.
Yeah, I know it's state board.
No, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it wasn't a, it wasn't a Union County.
That's why I went a few years ago, I remember going.
No, but it wasn't, it wasn't a Union County.
So, Union County wasn't there at all? Even though it was a graduation rate recognition ceremony?
This, no, this was a different, this was a different issue. I know, I know, when you're talking about the, the big, you know.
Yeah.
No, that's not, that's not. No, huhuh. Because I didn't, I, uhuh.
So, there were, so even though we had highest graduation, weren't recognized at this meeting?
That wasn't the ceremony.
I, I, I'm just going by what I have here.
I know, I know.
I don't know the dates, I didn't go this year. I didn't go last year. Graduation rate recognition, it says. And I just want to know who was in attendance.
9, 5, 14 is the date.
Okay, this is 9, 5, 14.
Correct, doesn't say, it was, it was different. Preparation issues.
At, at this point, I, I think what I've heard is that, there has been a request for additional travel documentation and research. I, I'm fine with that. And, and I don't know how the board chair is going to handle this, but I would like to state that if we do this, that we put a very stringent timeline on it to get it back to us.
Yep.
Because I, I really do.
Before the new board takes over.
I think it will be highly unfair to pass this over to a new board.
Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion or questions, I, at this time, based on the pattern of behavior we've seen throughout both these incidents, especially in regards to travel, I move that the vice chair be censured. And also, as part of that motion, would request that a investigation into travel that may conflict with state board business and the vice chair's submission locally, be investigated, and that our staff confer with appropriate law enforcement officials to see if there's a violation within the general statutes of the state of North Carolina.
And those are two different items.
So, I have a motion on the floor?
Well, I, I would like to ask Ms. Morris, I mean, do, do we need to deal with this as a whole, or separately? Because to me, it seems like, it, I mean, legally, I mean, is it one issue, or is it? I mean, are they two separate issues?
When we have discussion, we need to have a floor, there's a second.
I would second the motion, if we can have discussion. I, I would.
All right, all right, I have a second, so now we can have discussion.
Well, it, it's, it, it seems that we have two issues here. Because if there has been falsification, I meant, for a better word, of travel logs, well, that is different than censuring because of what happened in front of Marvin Ridge. Do you see what I'm saying? So, I, we-
So, do we need to take them, do we need to take the Marvin Ridge piece?
Or, or does the censure go for the travel logs?
I'm sorry, but I don't mean to interrupt you, but just to speak to that, Ms. F-.
Hodges.
Hodges, I don't think we have, do I get yelled at for that?
Just by me?
I, I'm, I'm concerned that we don't have the power to do anything more than censure.
As far, well, you know, I'm a elected official, it's just a reelection. Something you can do about our position on the board of education. You can censure, as I said before, you can-
Ms. Hodges was talking to, to the possibility of something other than censure, and that's what I wanted to stop.
No, 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 that's not what I'm, I'm not talking about anything besides censure.
Are you saying censure per item? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I guess, is, is, is this, is this issue with the travel logs, something that would even fall under censure? Or does it, I mean, right now, it seems like there needs to be a little bit more information gathered. So, would we not wait till that happens before we vote on a cen, on a potential censure, or whatever it is?
I think, I think it's a two-part question.
It is, yeah, I guess that's, yeah.
If it makes you guys feel more comfortable, I will amend my motion. Number one, pursue censure.
Hold, hold on just a second, I want to hear from Mr. Pig before you amend your motion.
I think Mr. Stewart's heading in the same direction that I was going to offer, because of, it sounds like to me, we're talking two separate issues here. One is, do we censor based on the information we've been given that tonight, on all accounts? And then number two, do we vote to move forward and see if there's any legalities or that involved? So, to me, we're looking at a two-part thing. And I think, Ms. Stewart, that's what you were alluding to.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, here, our-
Mr. Bitchin.
Actually, actually, in, in my view, you're, you're almost there. And, and I say almost, simply because the travel logs have become a separate issue. That's a separate issue. The only thing in my mind that is up for a vote on censure is the Marvin Ridge situation. You know, this evening. Because if we're going to be getting additional information on the travel logs, we can't create double jeopardy and call a censure on the travel logs, then get more information on the travel logs, and then have another verdict on the travel logs. You know, these are two different things.
Allow, allow me to clarify.
Mr. Stewart.
And first, I want to make two points. In the state of North Carolina, for instance, if you make a fraudulent insurance claim, and you submit a proof of loss and sign it and submit it, regardless of whether you collect the first dime on that claim, you have committed a felony in the state of North Carolina. If you falsify your tax returns, you have committed a crime when you submit that documentation, whether you receive one dime from the federal government or not. And I think this behavior is highly questionable. I think it's very possibly illegal. And I think from an ethical standpoint, it deserves a censure for the travel reimbursement issue. That is the first half of my motion. And the second part of my motion, as amended, would be to ask that this be reviewed by appropriate authorities, a thorough review to contrast local travel versus state travel, and see if, in fact, there are other instances where this has happened. And it won't be a matter of censure for us, per se, if that's the question. This could be a question for the district attorney to, to resolve. So, I think, yes, a censure is in order here tonight. And number two, the referral to the proper authorities to adjudicate this, if necessary, are part of my motion. And that's how I will restate it.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Do I have any other discussion?
What timeline are we talking about having our staff review travel logs?
I would, I would like to have this, you know, before the end of the month.
Are we talking, what, what travel, what timeframe are you speaking, what time, sorry, what timeframe are you speaking of for travel logs? You, Ms. F, has been working for four years. Are you asking for four years of travel logs? Are you asking for-
From state?
From the time she was appointed. I would say from the time she was appointed at the state board.
I think that's the only thing in question.
I agree.
I'm also concerned with making a friendly amendment to that motion, that the information we've received in this report and subsequent reports be provided to the State Board of Education.
Mr. Chairman, I will accept that amendment.
All right, I have a first, and I have a second. Do I have any further discussion or friendly amendments? Mr. Collins, the old guy.
Well, I have, I have a question, not really any kind of amendment or whatever. And who would further deal with this? And obviously, Ms. Savage has the, a right to have representation on the issue. So, are we talking about going back to Chris Campbell? Or?
I think once, once we get into a situation where outside authorities are investigating, this is beyond our purview and beyond our control. This would be left up to the district attorney as to if he wants to investigate it, and what agents that he would assign, be it the sheriff, the SBI, or whoever. This could basically be drawn out to go before a grand jury to decide the issue before any action's taken. So, this isn't going to happen slowly. But, and you know, I want to speak to this element right here. Ms. Hill, like I said, you and your friends, you act like you're in middle school every time we have a meeting. We're conducting serious business, so I would ask that you please refrain from outbursts, or I would ask that you be removed from the meeting. I'm going to give you the courtesy to let you remain. But if it happens again, I'll ask that you be removed. Now, once this gets past our purview, it's out of our control. And I think all we can do is respect that the proper authorities investigate. Our purview is censure. And I think we've, we've got what we need to do that here tonight, and then ask that it be investigated by the appropriate authorities. And that was the intention of my motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, as far as the travel logs, I don't know that the DA need to come in and pull the travel logs. That's something that we have on file. Yeah, I don't see where outside authorities, because we just need the travel logs pulled into view. That doesn't need to be done by anybody other than, than, than staff.
Well, and that's what I'm asking for, Ms. Bitchin, that we pull that information and forward it to the appropriate authorities that need to look at it outside our organization.
No, we will be the appropriate authorities once they are pulled. We're, we're the ones that can look at the travel logs and see. And then at that point, if anything needs to be done, then we will pass it on.
Let's ask general counsel. If, to do this, what would be the most appropriate way?
We're going to need to make a public records request to the state for travel information. There is no, I can't give you any timeframe for the receipt of that information. So, I can't give you any timeframe for being able to even look to compare these. And so, it is the pleasure of the board how they would like to have that investigated. That is solely within your purview.
Now, would, excuse me, would, would, all right, is the best way to have that done to continue to engage Campbell Shatley? Or is it better that we do that in-house? Or is that better that we request all of the information, and we turn a packet over to another authority?
Mr. Chairman, allow me, I, you know, I do not want to see one more red cent on outside counsel to look at this. We have what we need to do, what we as this board need to do. And there are appropriate authorities that are paid to investigate these matters. I say we let them do their jobs. We don't need to get into a matter of where we're asking our counsel or our outside counsel to look at this and prosecute it in any way, shape, or fashion.
Right.
We need to censure, and we need to refer it. And that's the intent of my motion. And with that, I will call the question.
The question is called. I have a first and a second. All in favor of censure? Raise your hand. All opposed? Are you abstaining? One abstention. Okay, so with that, we will proceed.